Thank you. Okay, councillors, we have a substantive motion that's up on the screen. I'll just ask our officers to actually put that up. This is the substantive motion that we have on our screen at the moment. Councillors, I'll be asking for a vote for this item.
Mayor.
Councillor Dimitriades.
I'd like to seek to vote for point seven D separately and vote for point seven A, B and C together.
Okay, do I have a... is that X?
No.
Okay. But only just... no second of that?
I think... can I just clarify?
Councillor Dimitriades, when you're saying A, B and C together, if you just vote for seven D separately, then A, B and C are automatically in the rest of the part.
Yes, that's correct, sorry.
Okay. So the request, Mayor, is to take seven D in part, and is that your discretion?
I'd like to request that we take a number of sections individually. And I understand this will be at your discretion.
Oh, sorry, ma'am, there's been no decision on my... made about my request.
Yep, Councillor Rennie, if you can kindly sit down, I'll consider the request. I noticed that Councillor Lawrence had been standing up for a while. Councillor Lawrence?
I just need to declare a conflict of interest in relation to this item D. And I'll leave the chamber because you still...
Okay, well, not just yet, because I haven't made a decision at this point in time on where we stand on number seven D in reference to the Northkirk Golf Course. I think because in our previous amendments that we've voted on them individually and we've accepted them into the budget, and I'm going to use my discretion, that I think we do the same for this item, as I believe it needs the same merits as the other items that have come to cancel this evening. Even though that it's come through as a substantive motion, I will allow it to be taken out and voted on separately. I think that we've come too far to start pulling out other items, and I'm not going to allow other items to be pulled out, as I feel that we've voted and we've accepted and we've had multiple months of discussions over these very, very little couple of items and amendments that we've been putting in the last weeks. On that note, I'm going to allow for Councillor Dimitriades to pull that item out. And Councillor Lawrence, then you can declare your conflict. Okay, and I will ask, so, Councillor Rennie, you can stand and you can actually...
Mayor, thank you, you've already actually effectively indicated what your ruling is without hearing. So in light of the fact that you've already indicated that you've prejudged, that I'm not going to proceed to be whacked twice. But I would suggest that if we're pulling it out, then it actually needs to be debated, not just pulled out, because the whole matter has not been debated. And so we'll have to start that debate over again.
We have had discussions and we've had the debate, we've had questions to the CEO and we've had months of going through this particular amendment.
With respect, Mayor, every other amendment was debated. Your rationale for pulling it out is that it wasn't debated and the others were. So, under the same logic, the others were debated, this should be debated.
Sorry.
I'll allow the debate, however, I'm only going to allow the mover and I'll allow the objection. And then if the mover wants to then have a right of reply, which they do not have, and then I'm just going to put it to vote. I'm not going to go around and stay and sit here for the next hour or so over one amendment. We have other agenda items that we need to get through this evening. So I'm now going to move on. Councillor Lawrence, thank you, you can leave the chamber.
Yes, I'd like to declare a conflict of... general conflict of interest in relation to a family member of residential many near Northkirk Golf Course.
Thank you. Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, Mayor, so I'm wanting to... I'm voting against having this item in the budget. And that's because there's $100,000 that will just be sitting there for a certain number of months, when we could be using that money for, for instance, supporting the homeless, which we currently haven't fully funded. There's... we could also be using that money for remediation works at Clements Reserve that is still not being done until next year, not being started until next year, according to the decision of this council. And there's certain other projects that we could be doing which would take priority than having $100,000 stored in our bank account, waiting to do something to a park that we don't even have design... haven't been approved the designs for, because we're waiting on a golf architect to give us a full picture of the Northkirk Golf Course precinct. So I'm requesting that this $100,000 be removed from the budget, because we need money to be supporting those who are more vulnerable, who are... and particularly with the cost of living increasing, we need to make sure that we spend this money appropriately. Thank you.
Councillor? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Dimitriades's argument was about the most nonsensical I think I've heard in a long time.
Point of order, Mayor, that's...
I'm not going to accept orders, because I'd really like to move on right at this point in time. So, Councillor Rennie, continue, thank you.
Half the money in this budget will be spent in the second half of the financial year and approximately half will be spent in this financial year. So when in the financial year the $100,000 is spent is of absolutely no consequence. We all know that the money we're allocating tonight is spent across the full 12 months. Secondly, this $100,000 comes from the open space reserve and so there is absolutely no relationship between the $100,000 here and money that would be spent on homelessness or any other service, because they're completely different buckets of money and the funding stream for this is quite clear. Thirdly, the golf architect is looking at the golf course and is not actually going to have any bearing whatsoever on the golf path, on the path around to the park, because that is not the brief of the golf architect, who is actually looking at how to configure a beautiful golf course. This is one of the very few items that was actually recommended for funding by the officers. Everything else we've been crippling over tonight was not recommended by staff. Here we have an item that was recommended. And it was recommended because it was part of a council decision that we had already made and that appeared as a compromise when that decision was made. And many people weren't particularly happy with the compromise, I among them. But councillors who vote in favour of Councillor Dimitriades's motion tonight are in effect disrespecting a previous council decision that you were party to, that we were all party to, and disrespecting officer advice and maintaining a situation where accessibility is poor and some members, the most vulnerable members of our community, do not have access to the same level of amenity as others. And that includes people in wheelchairs and people on walking frames and people with prams. We have an opportunity here to follow the officer advice and put this in.
Councillors, as I'm not asking for a right of reply, I'm going to put this item to vote. No, we're running out of time. And I think, as I said, we've had this discussion for many months now.
So, Mayor, I respect that's your ruling. I'd just like to have it noted that at no point in time have I had an opportunity to speak to my amendment, which this was. And I'd just like it noted that I've been denied that opportunity to speak to it and make the case for the amendment, but I'll sit down and respect your ruling, thank you.
Oh, Councillor McCarthy, I'll allow you to speak then. I'll give you... I'll give you two minutes to speak and then that is it. There's not going to be any other item that's going to be pulled out, amended, changes or no other speakers. Thank you, Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to apologise to the residents who've written to me, who've spoken to me and I think have also spoken to each other about the outcome that I think is about to play out here. Those residents, many of whom live adjacent, nearby or within rolling or walking distance to Northkirk Golf Course, have been looking to council to get on with the proposal that it adopted last year. I wasn't happy with that proposal, which was the shared use proposal, because I think that it missed a few key elements. But one of the things that I was pleased by was that commitment to access, to accessing a public open space, to accessing and making a connection from Warkwark Bridge through to Mayor Park, and that access would enable all... access for all abilities. What we have tonight is further delay, on top of delay that has happened more recently, to a project which council has committed to and committed to rightly because of what the community told it. The community said it wanted shared use, it wanted access, and it wanted that access to be provided for people with all abilities. That's an equity consideration that this council, I believe, right now is on the cusp of failing. And I say that with great regret, because I think our record in this area is actually excellent most of the time. I don't understand what's behind this move. I can make conjecture, but I won't do that now. I will have to now turn my attention to seeking to secure this funding from wherever I can, whether it's the local member, whoever it might be, so that we can actually see that access is provided. I cannot honestly stand here and have this go through and not act. So, Mayor, I apologise to those residents who will be missing out for what is now another six months. And I'm concerned that they'll never see this path constructed, because that seems to be the intent of some councillors in this chamber. Mayor, I'll end it there, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, councillors, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour of Councillor Dimitriades's amendment? I have Councillor Dimitriades, Councillor Messina, Councillor Greco and Councillor Williams. All those against, Councillor Hannan, Councillor Rennie, Councillor Newton, Councillor McCarthy, that's a draw. I'm using my discretion of my mayoral chief vote. And I also would like to vote for Councillor Dimitriades in having the item taken out. I believe that the reason why I've done that is because it needed to have the same ruling as the previous amendments that we put into this budget. I've had...
Sorry, Mayor, it was an amendment to... you weren't voting on an amendment to take it out. You were voting on it in part, I believe, can I just clarify through Jacinta? So I think you need to... the vote is in part, so it's in the budget at the moment. So you're either voting to leave it in or take it out. You weren't voting on an amendment, you were debating the part. Can I just clarify that, Jacinta, is that right?
Yeah, through your minutes, correction.
So I just want to... just, Mayor, I think you should just clarify, because you called for a vote on Councillor Dimitriades's amendments, for the minutes it wasn't. Councillor Dimitriades asked if you could take it in part. This is... you are now voting for this part of the budget and you are voting whether you want to leave it in or take it out. So the proposition is if you want to leave it in, all those in favour, and those who don't want to leave it in are against it. Does that make sense? So maybe you can run the vote again, Mayor, because I think just for clarity of the process.
Okay, so all those in favour that want to vote it in?
Leave it in, it is in.
Keep it in?
To keep it in, I have Councillor Hannan, Councillor Rennie, Councillor Newton, Councillor McCarthy, all those who would like to vote to... in part to take it out. I have Councillor Dimitriades, Councillor Lina, Councillor Greco and Councillor Williams. I'm using my discretionary vote and I will also be taking it out. Thank you.
With apologies from a governance point of view, I'm not sure that this process has been correct. I believe the correct process would have been to vote on this as a budget item and for it to fail to be voted on. Voting to take it out is an amendment. And we can't have an amendment which is counter. And so I still think that this is contrary to the governance local law, under our governance local law, is a point of order. We're neither taking it out or keeping it in, we're voting on whether this is part of... I understand, but this is inherently problematic and should never have happened. But I am challenging the governance procedure because it's incorrect.
Through you, Mayor, so what councillors are voting on is point seven D on its own as part of the budget. The councillors will then vote for the remaining items as a whole after this vote has been taken.
So what we voted on was part of the budget was to either keep it in or take it out.
Through you, Mayor, I think the advice... we're getting into a bit of semantics here. Councillor Rennie is technically correct, I believe, but the vote was for it to be included in the budget in part, so just to be clear. And I believe councillors voted on that basis. If you're not sure they did, you might... you could run that again. But I think Miss Stevens is saying it's in the budget, it's taken in part. So you're voting on this part of the budget, yes or no? Basically, yes, it's in the budget. Or if the vote fails, it's taken out, the consequences, it's taken out of the budget. You might want to check with Councillor Rennie if she's satisfied with that answer.
Okay, councillors, we can ask for Councillor Lawrence to come back in. So councillors, we're now going back to the budget. So between points four to 23, do I have councillors who would like to speak on that item in reference to the budget minus seven D?
I'll speak if I can.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy.
I'm going to speak in favour of the budget items that, obviously excluding point seven D, which has now been excluded. I won't go over that debate again, because that's been had. Mayor, I want to do something which I think all councillors hopefully will do, if not by speech, then certainly personally, which is to say an enormous thanks to the organisation of officers, of managers, of workers. Many of the people sitting here tonight, who have worked significant hours into the evening, often weekends, in addition to people that aren't here tonight with us, but who do an extraordinary amount of work to make this organisation function and run and deliver a range of services that we know our community values so highly. We know that our community values these things so highly, because that's what they tell us. And, Mayor, I want to just say first of all a big thanks to the executive team, to the management team and to all the officers who've contributed to getting this budget together. Because whilst we've had a debate now going for a couple of hours around literally less than 1% of the entire budget envelope, the vast majority of this is hard decisions, important calculations and significant challenges in terms of making the money work, whilst also trying to deliver the best value we can for our residents and broader community. So I want to say that thanks, I want to also thank also all the residents and traders and community groups and others, including those here tonight, who've contributed to our consultation. And particularly the strong voices in favour of things like open space, which didn't surprise me at all, but a significant percentage, overwhelming percentage in fact, of the budget submissions that we received, were in favour of open space improvements and sports grounds and community amenity. I want to recognise that that is what our community tells us. And I want to sort of finish off, Mayor, by thanking all councillors for their participation in the process to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, I'd like to speak to the substantive motion. And again echo what Councillor McCarthy said, thank all the staff. It's been a very challenging budget and, you know, as Father Bob McGuire said once at a citizenship ceremony, we're a bit prickly, but Peter, when eventually you get to know us, we're all really very welcoming. But you certainly are in the Darabin family if you've done a budget with us like this. Seriously, Darabin's total budget is 204 million. That is within the expectations of past forecasts for six years. This is a very robust organisation, although over reliant on residential rates. But again, we don't pay the parking fines that Yarra people put up with. The issue is, over the last six years, we did quite a bit of planning and then we suddenly built two very large major projects. And we, for first time, borrowed substantive money and we got a rogue reserve bank. So we're suffering like the state government, we're suffering like everyone in our community at the moment is suffering, because both mortgage people suffer and renters suffer as well. So this, we've had to sort of batten down the hatches and concentrate on things that matter, like people's health and safety and open space. And while we aren't doing large projects, the $30 million is going into some very neglected stadiums across the most disadvantaged parts of this city, which are smaller projects, projects that don't get an hour and a half of debating. But projects that I'm very proud of, helping some of the most disadvantaged clubs in this city. In addition to that, we've finally broken through and got the towards zero homelessness into the budget. We've got...
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence, your time is up.
Thank you for that, but there's plenty to commend in the budget.
Any other councillors who would like to speak towards on the budget? Councillor Greco?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, look, I'd like to first underline what other councillors have said, particularly in relation to thanking the staff for all the work that they've done. It's been a really exhaustive exercise, it's been a thorough exercise, a very detailed exercise. And it's made councillors and the community better understand what's in the budget and how the budget process works. So I'd like to extend my thanks to all involved. I think from a macro level, just getting into relation to the budget, from a macro level, I mean, we're talking about $200 million worth of revenue in relation to the forthcoming year. That's quite a substantial amount of money. So it's a substantial profit and loss statement and also a balance sheet that follows that. But also I'd like to highlight the surplus. We're dealing with a surplus of about $9.6 million. And we're moving from a surplus in the previous financial year of only a million dollars. And it's forecast in the future years that the surplus will be 11 and 10 million dollars. So why I'm mentioning that, because that puts us in a very sustainable position. So, because I know there's a lot of gloom talk about sustainability of councils, but I think what we're doing tonight here is putting us into a sustainable, into a sustainable future. And I'd just like to highlight three things which stick out to me, which are quite new in this budget. One is the Future Fund. And I'd like to thank our CEO in helping us facilitate through that process of establishing a Future Fund. And why I'm particularly excited about it, because the Future Fund will eventually, if I'm still on this council, hopefully be used in order to redevelop and rebuild the Reservoir Leisure Centre, which is a much deserved asset there in the north of the city. And I think the Future Fund is the vehicle for that. The other thing that I think is important is the extension of expenditure in relation to early childhood education, which is very, very important, as we all should note.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillors, any other councillor like to speak in reference to the budget? No, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. I too would like to make just a quick statement and say thank you, Peter. ELT, Daryl, Dean, council staff for all the reports, feedbacks and your honesty. And councillors' passion for the community, because I know that you're all here because you're passionate for your community. Council has planned a budget that aims to balance on two important community needs and making sure that we have enough money for the future. This is a budget that delivers on key projects for our community, wants and paves the way for a more financially sustainable future without compromising on our services. Like all councils in Victoria, we are facing challenges to our financial sustainability from rising cost pressures, rat caping and cost shifting, along with increasing pressure and demand on our services and infrastructure from a rapidly growing population. Darab and Council prides itself on equality, accessibility and diversity of services that we provide to the community. Continue to deliver the core services that people rely on, like maintaining parks and roads, while also investing in important projects like rebuilding new infrastructures such as John Hall and K D Caddaman Pavilion. Improvements to cycling lanes and corridors, expanding libraries and resources across our libraries and after dark library hours. Council will work towards a zero carbon household for better energy programmes and support residents and businesses to reduce emissions by creating efficient electric homes and businesses powered by renewable energy. Ongoing commitment to tree planting as a natural cooling and climate emergency response. I'd like to express our gratitude to all the individuals who generously shared their thoughts and valued feedback. who generously shared their thoughts and valued feedback on the revised council plan and budget for the 2023-24. This includes the invaluable contributions from the numerous amount of community members who generously shared their thoughts and feedback. Your input has played a crucial role in shaping the direction and our priorities for the upcoming year. I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to have your say and for your dedication to making our community even better. Thank you. I'll move on to the next item.
Mayor, do we need to vote for a continuance?
Actually, we do, thank you. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Rennie and I've got councillor Greco, all those in favour? Thank you, that's been voted on unanimously. Councillors, we're moving on to the adoption of 9.2 of the revised council plan. Apologies councillors, we do still need to vote on items 24, 25, 26, 27 and 28 of the budget. I'm going to just read out what it is. It's the declaration of the curbside waste service charge and public waste service rate and associated concessions. The declaration of pensioner concessions and concessions for properties owned and managed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. And I'm not going to ask to go into the debate, I'm just going to ask for a move and second on and then we can vote on the item. Councillor Messina is the mover, councillor McCarthy the second. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we'll move on to 9.2, the adoption of the revised council plan for the 2021-25 and the health and wellbeing plan for the 2023-24 council plan, action plan. Do I have a mover for that item? Councillor McCarthy, do I have a second? Councillor Tom Hannon, councillor McCarthy?
Thanks Mayor, I won't go too long on this hopefully, I don't have time anyway. I just want to highlight the process that council has just undertaken, the significant amount of feedback that's been received, which was part of the same consultation process that referred also to the budget and the financial plan. Council received 262 pieces of feedback on the budget related themes and a small number of these related to the council plan and council action plan across the below themes. And I just want to mention these themes, Mayor and councillors, because I think it's important to understand where our community sits when it looks at these documents, the things that it's concerned about and the things that it wants us to focus on. So recreation reserves, 84% of all submissions through that consultation process. We're in relation to recreation and reserves. I won't go through what that number is, councillors are aware of what that figure is made up of and the particular sites that residents were deeply concerned about. And I look forward to seeing council take action in relation to those things. But also I just want to highlight three more. One is public places, that was 3%. Active transport, 2%. And also equity and wellbeing, another 2% and environmental issues, another 2%. I mention these because it just demonstrates how large the response was when it came to our recreation reserves. So Mayor, I mention that because I also want to highlight the fact that the revisions to the council plan and the action plan do go to council addressing what it can deliver in the current term and trying to be realistic with its expectations, transparent with its community, but also accurate with its reporting. And so there've been a number of amendments that have been proposed, as councillors would be aware, to both the action plan document that you can see there as the attachment and also the municipal health and wellbeing plan. I want to particularly highlight that there's been a couple of important changes, projects that council has decided are not a priority at this point in time and which does not wish to focus on and others that have been brought forward for delivery. Mayor, I won't go through those in detail, other than just to say they are all in the report. Thank you to the officers and the community members for their work with us in getting us to this stage. And I endorse the documents that you have in front of you in their revised format, which I believe will then be submitted to the minister for noting. Thanks.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Councillor Hannon?
Yes, thank you Mayor. I'll just add briefly to councillor McCarthy's words. And just to again point out, there was a great deal of consultation done in the development of this and updating of the draft plan, including online, in print and in person, as well as a deliberative process involving 33 participants over two sessions. So I'd like to thank everyone who took part and gave their time into that giving feedback. And also the staff who've put together and prepared a really well presented plan in line with this more constrained budget that we've just discussed tonight. Look, there's a lot of highlights, there's a few that I'd mention that I'm really excited to see over the next period. A big one being the opening of the Northkirk Aquatic Recreation Centre. It's going to be really exciting and modern and inclusive centre for the whole of the community. 100% renewable energies, a leading example in Australia to follow. And yes, while there was a quite a large outlay by Darabben Council, ultimately, this centre will actually provide a source of revenue coming back into council, which is quite extraordinary where most pools are actually annual expenses. We're expanding free year old kinder in addition to the state government's recent announcements. We're increasing participation in community sport, a number of the items in the budget tonight dealt with that. But particularly looking to increase participation of women, girls, people of all genders and sexualities, as well as First Peoples, players from diverse cultural and ethnic backgrounds. We're continuing to implement the reservoir revitalisation project, which is a successful partnership towards a thriving north of our municipality. And just to say that these projects are in addition to the many services that Darabben provides all year, every year, such as maternal and child health, aged care, youth services, parks, open space, etc. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I have any objectors that would like to talk?
Okay, thank you councillor Messina. I'm not objecting, but I just wanted to point something else. We did start off on a fairly ambitious council plan. But I do want to pick on some things that are really dear to our community that haven't been discussed, but they've been omitted from the original council plan. And they are only in the 10 big action items. And something that's very dear to the community, I know, is activating Edwards Park Lake Boathouse in Reservoir and undertaking a feasibility study for the Global Learning Hub in Preston. I acknowledge that there are not enough resources to continue the feasibility study for Global Learning Hub in Preston. So I've withdrawn the advocacy there and I acknowledge that it should not be in this council plan. But I look forward to the activation of Edwards Lake Boathouse. It's much needed for this community, they continue to ask for that. So I look forward to reports coming to council in relation to that. Champion local businesses and creative industry, champion local businesses. When we talk about residents, we talk about rate payers as well. And renters are also included in that. But some of us tend to forget our small businesses. And facilitating the establishment of the Darabben Chamber of Commerce or whatever foundation we choose moving forward is a must for this council. And I look forward to the report coming to this chamber. We have to remember that we're in an economic downturn and we need to support our local businesses. They supply jobs, they keep our community thriving. So I look forward to us continuing that big action and in some form or another, because I know some councillors, council laws are against it. But whatever framework of looking forward we have, I'm going to be a fierce advocate to ensure that the voices of our local businesses are heard by Darabben Council.
Thank you councillor Messina. If there are no other speakers or objectors, I will now put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll go over to the next item, which is the contract award. 9.3 councillors, do I have a mover on that in reference to the transactional banking services? Councillor Hannon as the mover, councillor Rennie as a second. Councillor Hannon?
This contract is a central one to enable day-to-day operations, including payments to staff and contractors. It's important, it's a large contract. I'll wait for staff to put the names up there, but it's a significant one. So it's important to seek the best price on behalf of rate payers. So a competitive tender was undertaken from a panel of state government providers. In addition to a strong focus on price, there was also a strong weighting on social factors, local businesses, sustainability and delivering non-fossil fuel investments. These are things that Darabben Council takes very seriously. It's a balancing game with those social and sustainable imperatives on one side and getting the best price on the other. And we'd like to keep pushing the impact that our short-term and long-term financial investments can have, particularly in relation to investing in clean energy and avoiding investment in nuclear weapons for future procurements. I'd like to thank the finance team for conducting this tender process in a professional manner and preparing the report for tonight. And I commend it to councillors for approval, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon. As a second, would you like to speak on the item councillor Rennie?
Thank you Mayor, I'll keep it very brief. I'm seconding this because obviously this is a contract we have to award for council's transactional banking services. But I do so without much enthusiasm because we're somewhat constrained by the state government's panel and the big banks that are on that panel. In no way should this award tonight be taken as some kind of endorsement that we think the bank we're awarding it to has standards, social and environmental standards that are adequate or really commendable in any way. And I look forward to a day when the state government panel enables us to choose banks that are more ethical and don't contribute to the climate crisis. And I think that's pretty important to say. This is not at the same time where we invest all our money, those decisions are made under a different process.
Thank you councillor Rennie. If there are no further speakers, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you councillors. We'll move over to the next item, which is 9.4, options to retain trees in Gladstone Avenue in Northkirk. Do I have a mover on that?
Mayor, I'd like to move-
Before you move then, I'm going to ask councillor Hannon to declare his conflict.
Sorry, sorry councillor.
Sorry.
Yeah, apologies, just noting as I did before, I have a conflict on this item. Advocacy is close to my work, so I'll leave this item, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon, we'll just wait for you to leave the chamber and then- Thank you councillors, councillor McCarthy?
Thanks Mayor, I'd actually like to move that we defer consideration of this item to the next council meeting on the 24th of July 2023, please.
Okay, I have councillor Rennie as a second. Councillor McCarthy?
I don't really have to say much in relation to a deferral, Mayor, other than I have had a request, should council consider the matter tonight? That is effectively the completion of the matter. I have had a request from residents who are seeking to still influence the ESV in relation to this matter. So I think it's pertinent that we should be at this point just deferring this item into the next council meeting to provide that one last opportunity before we consider this. And I'll leave it there Mayor, thank you.
I believe then that that is a procedural motion. I just want to ask officers or CEO if there's any issue in regards to deferring that item?
I might ask Ms Olivier, Ms Olivier Rachel to comment on that, please.
So councillors, if it was deferred, we wouldn't proceed to act. I think the risks are outlined in the report. There is a potential for fines and the regulations that we would remain non-compliant with are there for a safety purpose.
Through you Mayor, can I just clarify, these are the last trees we have to deal with in the audit, is that correct? So these are the last three trees to meet our compliance requirements under the audit. So there is some risk, perhaps not a big risk to just defer for a month, but there is some risk with deferral.
Okay then councillors, I'm going to ask for that item to be put to vote for have that deferred for the next month. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is the governance report for June 2023, 9.5. Councillors, do I have a mover on that item? Oh sorry, we'll bring in councillor Hannon back in first, sorry.
And through you Mayor, for this governance report, we do have a minor officer adjustment to 0.9 of the officer recommendation.
Okay, we'll have our officers, they will put that up on the overhead.
Through you Mayor, that 0.9, that point is just slightly updated to reflect attendance at last week's audit and risk committee to be incorporated in the attachment in the biannual report and the annual performance report.
Thank you Jodie. Councillors, councillor Lawrence?
I would just note something with the governance report that says I took leave for seven days, I didn't take leave for seven days, but-
Let me get some governance advice.
I both attended and I didn't present any medical request.
So councillor Lawrence, your leave was recorded on the basis of your request to the CEO requesting leave for those seven days?
Yeah, I think the next day I was dragged into meetings and I didn't get a medical leave certificate.
Councillor Lawrence, so you're asking for that item to be amended for it to be removed?
Yeah, I did indicate I was going to take leave, but I didn't take any and I didn't present a certificate. There was too many meetings.
I'm not sure what to do in this situation, sorry. I'm just going to get some governance or CEO advice. Councillor Lawrence, as from the CEO, we didn't have any notification that you had cancelled your leave, but we're more than happy to make the amendments this evening. If you could also please put in writing an email to our CEO and our governance people that that was the case and we'll be happy to make those amendments and changes for you.
Mayor, I'm happy to move as is until we receive the written advice.
Sure. So I have councillor Newsham as the mover and who would like to be the second? Councillor Messina, thank you. Did you want to speak on the item councillor Newsham?
Yes, just briefly, there's a few things I think that are worth highlighting in this report. So they are, I think we should congratulate councillor Messina on continuing on as council representative on the recycling Victoria Local Government Advisory Committee. And that's a very important area to Darabben, so it's really good to see. I think it's also worth talking about the transparency we have about the stormwater harvest wetland in Dole Reserve, where it was made under a confidential decision, but it has now been released to the public about the amount. So it shows our transparency. And it's also a project that we've been working on for a number of years that I'm really excited to see finished. And I think it's also just worth mentioning that our audit and risk committee has done a really fantastic job. It's an incredibly important committee that makes sure that they have that oversight of our financial plans and wanted to give a big thank you to them, thank you.
Thank you councillor Messina.
Thank you, just really quickly, I just want to say I'm really excited about continuing on being the council's representative on the Recycled Victorian Local Government Advisory Committee. And also just want to acknowledge your ongoing- And also, um, just want to acknowledge your ongoing um commitment from the attendees or the committee members on the Audit and Risk Committee. But I also want to thank equally um councillor Newton for being re-elected on the VLGA board. Congratulations. Not noted in the report, but I wanted to highlight it.
Councillor Newson is also uh the transport um.
I'm the ambassador for trans.
Yeah, the ambassador for the tram. Yeah, great work.
Mayor, if I could, I might actually move, I think, I think the point that councillor Messina has raised is of significance such that it warrants an amendment. And so that at point ten, uh, we would note that councillor Newton has been re-elected uh to the VLGA board. Uh, apologies for not circulating that. I'm hoping it's simple enough for the staff to capture. So point ten, note that councillor Lawrence has been re-elected to the board of the VLGA. Sorry.
Councillor Newson, not councillor Lawrence?
Confusion, much confusion. Uh, point ten being that to note that councillor Newton has been re-elected to the board of the VLGA. And thank you councillor Messina for highlighting that. I, I, I am assuming that'll be acceptable to the mover and secondar.
Yes. Does the mover and secondar accept that?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
All right, then I'm gonna put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, we'll move over to the next item, which are, are there any items to be tabled this evening? As there are no items to be tabled, I'll move over to the notice of motions. So we have um the support for the National Parent Sup campaign. Um, councillor Newson, I believe that that is your notice of motion.
Yes, I'd like to move that motion, mayor. Um, so this is a campaign that is advocating to the federal government for one-year paid parental leave.
I just need to get a secondar if that's okay. Councillor Rennie, thank you. Sorry, councillor Newson, continue.
Thank you. Um, so this is a advocacy campaign to the federal government to encourage one-year paid parental leave to be shared between both parents. And it also advocates for affordable and accessible childcare as well as care after school. Um, so this is something that came up with a local resident, Maddie, um, who encouraged me to put this forward. Um, there's a lot of people involved in this campaign across Darabin and across Australia. Um, as a new mum myself, I know how important the time is to have with your baby, particularly when they're under one. Um, but I'm also quite nervous about when I go back to work in October and childcare costs. Um, and what that's gonna look like. So I think that every child should have the best start in life as possible. Uh, I've been to places like Sweden where I've seen um men are in playgrounds as much as women because um they share parental leave and also it's a use-it-or-lose-it system, which I think is fantastic. So um, this campaign was first supported by Mary Beck in terms of councils about a year ago in April. And I think it'd be fantastic if we could get unanimous support for it at Darabin as well.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other speakers? Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak? If there were no further speakers, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. The next notice of motion we have this evening was councillor Greco's notice of motion on the Preston Market. Next steps. Councillor Greco, do I have a secondar on that item? Councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Look, I'm moving this motion and it's quite self-explanatory. Um, as it appears there in the agenda papers. Um, just very briefly, um, what's happened, as all of you would be well aware of, is that the um that the owner developer has, has announced that they may be um um closing the market in January. Therefore, what they're exactly saying is that they will be ceasing the current leases, which puts in danger many um of the livelihoods of, of the traders there. And as we have heard, that the traders are very concerned about that. Also, what, what we know is that um, is, is that not only does it threaten the, the jobs of the traders uh there, but also what it does is that it basically could turn the, the area into a ghost town. We know that the SAC report has acknowledged that the market is an icon that deserves to be um, um saved. Should not be knocked down and of its value to the community. Both from a heritage perspective and from a social perspective. So the threat of shutting down the market, which is to the discretion of the owner, obviously, um, puts that in real jeopardy. So what this motion therefore does is that it requests for council to sit down with the state government. Given that the state government has made a very forward statement in regards to safeguarding, safeguarding the heritage of the market, putting in place appropriate planning controls. But we don't know exactly what they are yet. And they will be revealed in, in the foreseeable future. Um, in the next few months, hopefully. And, and so we need to have discussions with the state government, also including the, the developers, to ensure that one, that the market obviously stays as per the SAC report and as per the minister's commitment to keeping the market. And also discussions, particularly with the state government, and look at that options that if the developer was to shut down the market, what would be the options that the state government could put in place in order to safeguard the, the continual, continuing operation of the market? And when we talk about the continuing operation of the market, the SAC report clearly says, based on council's expert witness that was presented, that the market can remain whilst development takes place. So it's a bit of a, a furphy saying that the market has to shut down for development to take place by the owners. And the final point that I'd make is that as part of the public meeting that was held by the community, over four hundred and fifty people participated. What was called for was public acquisition. And so we need therefore, as part of that conversation with the state government, talk about public acquisition of the market, particularly in the event
Thank you, your time's up.
that the developer was to shut down the market. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence, as a secondar, do you want to speak on the item?
Um, I'll reserve my right.
Councillors, are there any other councillors who'd like to speak on this item? Councillor Rennie?
Um, thank you. Look, I'm happy to support the notice of motion put in by councillor Greco. And I hope that when we consider all of the options for retaining the Preston Market and ensuring that is there for our kids and grandkids in fifty years' time. That we also consider whether the option of making the developer rebuild the market with a Gower, a Kramer Street frontage would actually be something that would enable the traders to trade continuously, enable the public to access the site while it's a building site and guarantee that trade is not interrupted and the market continues. One of the problems, I think, is that we've seen this as a winner-takes-all scenario and we've been winners on paper, you know, the, the plan that has come back looked great and people celebrated and said we've saved the market. And in fact, now we find that we've saved nothing at all. Because the market is about the stall holders and the market is about the people who go there. And one of the problems with the winner-takes-all scenario is that the loser can take their bat and ball and go home. And that's pretty much what's happened here. And now when I walk around the market and I was there on Sunday, there were signs in traders' windows saying build a new market. And so I think if we're genuine in this and if we're genuine in our desire to see the market be there in fifty years' time, we have to be open to every suggestion that comes back to us that enables that to happen.
Thank you councillor Messina.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to talk about, um, following on. And thank you councillor Greco for bringing this to um council. I don't believe that the state government is gonna go with compulsory acquisition and certainly council does not have the funds to buy the market. So that narrative in the community is a little bit of a myth. But I understand the advocacy to do that. And I understand councillor Greco stands to do that. Um, I think it's really important moving forward based on the notice of motion that I put in in April to ensure that we have a construction and a staging expert demonstrate how council's plan can be flourished. It has to be a staged operation. And if the developer has genuine concerns about it not being has to be in two-part process, then I don't see why we can't have an open-air market still on the footprint and extend a little bit over to Kramer Street if we have to. As long as it remains, the majority remains in the current format in terms of the footprint and it's an open-air market, we can. If it's supported by this council and the plan, that we can construct a little bit over into Kramer Street to make sure that it continues to flourish. I agree with councillor Rennie. The traders are the most important thing and community, but the developer is in it for a return on investment. Do I like density of two thousand two hundred apartments? Certainly not. But we have housing supply shortages, so we need to address that. Do we want all that density on that site? No. Do we want a, a market that is there for generations and generations to follow? Absolutely. But we need to make sure that it's um, comes into fruition and we'll do everything that we possibly can to do so. And I'm looking forward to the report next month that tells us how we're gonna do that. If it includes stakeholder and a stakeholder to come to the table like state government, I didn't put that in the notice of motion. But if it includes that we need to bring them in, uh, the premier in, we do so. But let's forget about compulsory acquisition. I don't think that's gonna be a reality.
Thank you councillor Messina. Uh, I just need to go to a procedural motion that we need to extend time. Councillor Rennie, thank you. And I have councillor Messina. All those in favour to extend time? That has been voted on unanimously. Thank you. Over to councillor Newson, do you want to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor Williams. Um, I'm seeking in support of this motion, but I agree with what's been said before that I think we really need to think carefully about our next steps now that we've had this threat from the developer about closing the market. Uh, so we are in a housing crisis. I think that what I heard when I listened to a lot of the traders in the interviews that we've heard, um, I heard that they do not want to lose one day of trading. And I think that is a very, very important consideration. So I do think it's worth council and community considering building, that building a new market closer to Kramer Street might be a good way forward. That means that the traders don't have to lose one day of trading. I think there's a possible future where the Preston Market is next to the beautiful Preston Station, which I think is a gorgeous building. Uh, where there are high-quality apartments here.
Point of order, um, mayor. Uh, I think the motion, my motion clearly says, it talks about um, keeping the market in the existing footprint. What I have heard, um, councillors talk about is um, um rebuilding the market somewhere else. Which is contrary, I'm not really sure whether the councillors are supporting um my notice of motion or actually speaking against my notice of motion.
Uh, could I clarify where in the motion it talks about the footprint?
Um, I'm just looking at the notice of motion, um. It just says that the retention of the existing market in any future redevelopment of the site.
Yeah, so the way I read that is that we're writing to the premier about that, which I think is fine. I'm happy to support that.
Hang on, hang on a moment, hang on a moment. So councillors and councillor Greco, I understand what you're saying, but because it's to one's interpretation, I'm just gonna keep going with the, with the motion and then just vote on it, um, if that's okay.
Thank you, mayor. So my interpretation, the reason I can say I'm in support of the motion is that I read number four as writing to the premier, including that you want the retention of the existing market. And I don't have any objection to writing that letter. I think that's fine. But the point that I'm making is that I think with the escalation from SOTA, I do think that it's worth considering what tactics and what strategy Darabin Council and the community uses from here on in. Because I've heard loud and clear from the traders that they do not want one day of trade lost. That's been very clear from them in all the media interviews that I've heard. Uh, I do think that there is a possibility to increase the amount of social housing, to stay off gas and to have high-quality apartments. And I think we need to keep pushing for that very carefully and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Lawrence?
Yes, uh, mayor, happy to support this. Obviously, um, the recent letter by the traders for a negotiated settlement with the developer and the state government is a request for economic survival for themselves and trading, and we should respect that. Um, and it's perfectly fine to offer our um cooperation with that. Um. Things have changed a lot in the last three years economically and, and we won the planning battle on three fronts, heritage, heights and the central location of the market. The question the state government needs to answer is what is financially viable for redevelopment? Are any of the plans we submitted actually tested as a business case? I'm talking about as the development. So that's something the planning minister must consider. And I wouldn't be surprised if they come back and say it needs more heights to actually make it happen. So, uh, while they're saying build the market, save the traders, it may be a question of build more housing somehow on that site to actually make any of our plans or dreams possible. But just throw in a wild thing, we could swap the land swap out the back here and we could take over the open space and have beautiful lawn at the front of Kramer Street as well. There's a lot of things people haven't thought about.
There are always options and there's always different visions. Um, any other councillors who'd like to speak on this item? If not, I'm gonna put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, uh, I'll move on to the next item, which is, uh, there are no urgent business items to be considered this evening. We will now move in, into the next item. So consideration of reports to be considered confidential. Peter?
Thank you, mayor. I have a confident interest in this matter. Um, so I'm gonna leave the meeting and wish you all good night, councillors.
Thank you. Councillors, I'll need a procedural motion to go into camera. I have councillor Messina and, do I have a secondar? Councillor Greco. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. I'll just wait for officers in that to leave. Thank you very much, officers, for your time.